...point of actually letting a contract for a project. But frankly, we rely on this plan to begin to schedule the staff's work so they can begin to do prefatory work on capital projects.
So all these projects will at least come back to council at the time of the contract awarding?
Yes, something as simple-
RFP or whatever.
Something as simple as streets you'd get in plans and specs that would come back to you noting which streets will be resurfaced or reconstructed and the estimated cost, then eventually if you approve that, then you'd eventually get a bid. On the more complex projects like a mini park, as you've seen in the past, you will get concept design, there'll be community meetings, you'll eventually get a finalized design, then you'll eventually approve plans and specifications and a bid. That can take, well, as you've seen, depending on the complexity of the project, that can take a year, year and a half, as you go through the environmental review process, concept review, finalized review, plans and specifications, and then eventual putting out a bid and award a bid.
Okay.
You usually see most, if not all, of these projects at multiple times in the ensuing years it takes to implement them.
Okay, so what we've said is, at this point in time, with our priorities as we've expressed them, this list is what's important. Our right, we reserve our right, council reserves its right to change its collective mind at any point during the process up until such time a contract is awarded.
That's right. And the CIP is a 10-year projection. You revisit it every year. So if something doesn't arise, we'll be back-
So we'll see this every year, then?
And actually, if you approve this, within the next six months, you're going to see it again as we come back for adoption of next year's budget because we add another year to the end of the CIP. It's always a rolling 10-year CIP, and you will revisit it again. Hopefully not in the detail that you spent on this year's, but you'll revisit it again. We'll note any changes that we have, whether it's resources, expenditures. You will likely hear issues that will arise, or you'll bring issues forward, or we'll bring issues forward that hadn't been anticipated and need to somehow be accommodated in the CIP. And then we'll begin pushing numbers around. I noted earlier that this program does not allocate nor rely on the tax increment commitment for parks and libraries. That's really unprogrammed money at this point, and of course, it doesn't exist yet until some of the projects are built. But at some point in time, that money will begin to come in. It'll be accounted for separately, and you and the council members at that time will need to make decisions about how to allocate that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we can proceed through the PowerPoint. I will try to go quickly through the first number of slides since it is just kind of a repeat of our adopted. First, I'd like to spend a few moments on our resources. And here is the revision, our adopted resources for this current year, 2007-8, along with the proposed changes to those resources. First two have to deal with sales tax. Sales tax is first line here. We had adopted the budget with 3.425 million coming from sales tax into the CIP, and that has now decreased down to 3,242,000. This is just reflecting the revenues that are coming in. They are coming in less from our sales tax source. So the economy is slowing down, if you will. The increase is not as much. Actually, this actually reflects a slight decrease from the prior year. The second item is ERAF and MUIO sales tax. This is reflection of the triple flip that the governor implemented two and a half years ago. And that number bounces around. The triple flip has a high volatility because they actually do it, they calculate it on a cash basis, and then they true it from the prior year. So one would think that this would go down, but it's actually going up because of the volatility in the revenue source. Show Canyon host fee, no change. Show Canyon tipping fee, no change. And then we have two changes. One is a transfer from the general fund of 8,250,000. This year, the general fund, or, excuse me, the general fund ended June 30th, '07 with a surplus of about 12.7 million. So we are taking 8.2 million of that and transferring it to the CIP.
Let me comment on this one briefly because this was really one of the first strategies to attempt to address the 40 to 70 million dollar gap in our CIP program. As Ron noted, we're expecting a relatively large year-end savings in the general fund, resulting mostly from the fact that we've had a number of vacancies throughout departments. As a result, expenses are down, and that money stays in the general fund and results in a year-end savings. That'll be between 12 and 13 million dollars.
Correct.
We anticipate that we'll need to utilize about $6 million of that to transfer to our uninsured liability fund for claims outstanding for this next year. That leaves a balance in the neighborhood of about 7 million dollars. So this transfer was made up of two components. One is about a 7 million dollar transfer from that savings. The other is a commitment from the general fund in each of the ensuing 10 years of the CIP for at least a million dollars a year in savings from the general fund to go back into the CIP program. You could look at it almost as an increase in the sales tax transfer, but effectively, we'll need to make sure that in the general fund that we have at least a million dollars or more each year that can be committed to capital improvement projects. And that's been plugged into the 10-year workout on the CIP and helps us to balance it.
The last item is transfer from the public benefit fund. This is from Electric, and this money will be committed to rehabbing the old police building. And this money is earmarked that it can only be used for retrofitting electrical fixtures. So they'll be putting in new lighting and more efficient electrical appliances, be it the HVAC and so forth. So the money has a lot of restrictions on it, but we can utilize a million and a half of that to rehab the old police building.
We noted this possible funding source when we talked about the old police building rehab project in the CIP. We feel pretty comfortable we can justify about a million and a half dollars, but that will need to be pinned down and finalized. But we're pretty comfortable that we can justify about this level as a contribution to that retrofit.
And that's earmarked. There's no discretion in the restrictions on that.
The public benefit charged money must be used for energy efficiency retrofits. As you recall, we have a program in GWP that allocates a certain portion for government, public agencies, small businesses, large businesses, residential. This would come out of the public agency component of that.
Right. Okay. Next is our gas tax fund resources, and all the numbers have stayed the same. Again, a reminder on the gas tax revenue, that it is based on cents per gallon. It is not a percentage of the price or the percentage of sales of gasoline. It's actually cents per gallon sold. So it's based on the quantity of the gas, not the price. The only change here is Proposition 1B state bonds. Our number that we've officially heard from the state now is 6,484,000. We are coming to council within the next few weeks to actually ask for an appropriation of this dollar amount. With that action by the council, then, we are eligible to receive one half of it during this current fiscal year. And then we'll receive the other half later. I haven't read up on the exact timing of that second half of the money.
So, Ron, before we leave this slide, I think it's important to keep in mind the roughly $4 million a year figure that we get from gas tax. Because what you'll see in both the adopted capital improvement program as well as the supplemental is the amount of money proposed to be allocated over and above gas tax for our street curb, gutter, sidewalk program.
So if we look at our additional resources over the 10 years, here is our funding strategy, a part of our funding strategy in order to balance this whole additional CIP projects. Total for the 10 years is 30 million and 88,000 dollars, and this is how we got to the 30 million. Use general fund surplus from '06-'07, which Mr. Starbird already talked about, of 5 million. We will do an additional annual general fund transfer of 10 million. Again, we're talking a 10-year time span here, so what this commits us to is 1 million dollars a year of a transfer out of the general fund to our capital improvement plan.
And I might add there, as we review the CIP each year, to the extent that we have greater savings than this in the general fund, and there's a likelihood we will, in fact, there's been more years that we've had rather sizable savings than there have been years that we've had in the level of 1 or 2 million dollars. Then the council, each of those years, can make a decision whether you want to continue to allocate more of that savings into the CIP. My guess is you'll have more years where there's going to be more savings than what we've anticipated here. You can decide to leave it in the general fund reserve, move it to CIP, allocate it for other one-time expenditures as you see fit, but we think this is a fairly comfortable, conservative estimate of what the general fund can support.
Let me ask another question. With regard to things like funding for our crossings, rail crossings, or obtaining funding for new buses, were those ever included in the CIP for which a funding from MTA would free up the dollars, the same way the public benefit money is being counted?
Uh huh. There has been on occasion. Buses generally in the transportation fund. I don't think we see buses in the general CIP, but the crossings, for example, were a capital improvement program project. And to the extent that we got state money, MTA money, then that freed up commitments generally from redevelopment agency in that case that we're having to make for those crossings.
So that's accounted for already?
Right.
Mr. Mayor, as Mr. Starbird said, the transit fund is what covers the buses, so the MTA grants to purchase the buses will free up the Prop A and C money that we would normally use to purchase those buses and allow us to put that back into the system.
But that's accounted for separate from all this. It's a separate fund, enterprise fund that doesn't really intermix with the general CIP fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Correct. Third item is transfer from redevelopment for Central Avenue rehabilitation on the street, 12 million dollars. Third is-
Let me comment on this quickly. You recall when we talked about the Central Avenue street improvements, we saw the prospect that the general fund could fund this project. We were uncertain, frankly, of its capacity. As we went through the CIP program, we initially were tapping the redevelopment agency for a number of rather large ticket items. This project, as well as increasing the commitment to bonds for the CIP, an additional 10 million dollars over and above what was in your adopted CIP, which I think was about 30 million dollars in GRA contribution. As we looked at all of the obligations and pressures for funding on the redevelopment agency, we left this project in at 12 million. We did not incorporate the additional 10 million dollars in bond money in order to give the redevelopment agencies some breathing room in terms of capacity to consider other projects that you might want to approve. So again, this is a fairly conservative program from that standpoint in that the potential capacity for bonding of the GRA has 30 million, 32 million dollars going into the CIP program. This 12 million, we did not tap the GRA, though, for additional resources in that regard.
Mr. Quintero?
How much did the Brand Boulevard improvement cost, does anyone know?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, the first phase was eight, three on the top and another two on the bottom. So about 13, 14 million dollars for the whole stretch from, as you recall, we went through and repaved in front of the car dealerships. Did some minor work down there, but the core of it from Colorado up to the freeway was about 11 million dollars.
And this money, the 12 million, would be allocated to do it all at one time from the freeway to-
Glen Oaks to Colorado.
Now, you could split it up differently, but this would cover the entire project.
Oh, wow. That's right. From Broadway.
From Broadway, yeah.
Central right now.
Okay. Should we go on?
Thank you. That takes care of central.
Okay. Next item is a commitment from the county, LA County grant for freeway park site of 2 and 1/4 million, and this would be for, I believe, soccer field up at freeway park site.
And we should note, this isn't a walk. This is one that we'll need to pursue, but in initial meetings with the county staff, they felt that we'd be a strong competitor for this level of funding, so we've included it in the budget. If at some point in the future we find out we can't get this much, then we'd have to come back and revisit how we fund those soccer fields. But for now, we've incorporated this amount that the staff feels fairly comfortable that we'd be able to bring to fruition. The total cost of freeway park site for two soccer fields is 5 and 1/2 million, I think?
I believe it's 5.5.
5.5 million dollars. In addition to that, as we'll note in the project side, we also have Columbus School at 3 and 1/2 million, so soccer fields would be getting about 9 million dollar allocation in this plan.
When would we know whether LA County has a-
George, do you have a sense of this, the timing on this?
You know, Mr. McFaul, I met with the county rep, and I think as soon as we're ready to go, it would be yearly. They would spread the cost out over three years. So she was, you know, fairly confident it can be done in the next year and two years following.
So we'd need to prep up the project, probably do the environmental, and then look at an implementation that's probably three years out. I suspect it'll take us three years to eventually get to the point that we'd be ready to construct. But with that, get some early commitment from the county on a phased funding, which is about 750,000 a year.
Approximately, yeah.
Is this something that the entire board of supervisors decides, or is it within the discretion of supervisors?
It sounded like it's within the discretion of the supervisor.
That seems like such a long lead time in terms of the actual, I mean, the EIR, I assume would obviously take a while, but after that, I mean-
I think the longest time would be the EIR, I think, and the neighborhood concerns about the additional use up there. I would say the EIR, you know, we were told about eight months for Cedar, and that took about 14 to 15 months. So I assume a year and a half for that EIR at the most. We can get that going, you know, as soon as you, the council approves it.
And we've identified this project in 10, 11, 11, 12, because we have Columbus we're going to be working on as well. Columbus will be prepping up over the next two years while the district rebuilds Columbus School, so that once it's available, we can move very quickly to go to bid and let that contract. So Columbus School will take a year or plus of workup, and then will be prepped in time once the site's turned over to us, so we can move very quickly right into a bid.
Right. And that would just be construction. We'd be ready, as soon as they gave us the site, you know, graded, we'd be ready to go.
So this next fiscal year, we're working actively on Columbus, and then we roll right into working actively on freeway site A. Part of what we're having to balance in this program is also the availability of money in the years in which we want projects to occur. You can't do all the 10 years in the first three or four years. You don't have money. And two, it's just a lot of capacity and project to try and manage at one time. So our feeling was site A is one that we'd be tackling come 9, 10, 10, 11, 11, 12 timeframe.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Next item, we've already discussed, a million and a half from the public benefit funding for the old police building. And then an additional transfer from the general fund due to our vacancy savings, which Mr. Starbird already talked about, of 2 and 1/4 million. And then the last item is actually revenue revisions to sales tax and ERAF, which we discussed prior also. This is just extending it out since our sales tax revenue has decreased and is still decreasing slightly. This is the reduction in the revenue over the 10 years of 2.9 million dollars.
You know, Ron, before we leave the resources aside, we should probably note that the original adopted CIP anticipates and includes in its resources 2 million dollars in park library impact fees.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah, it does.
So assuming those projects come online, we've already accounted for about 2 million dollars in park library impact fees as part of the resources funding in the original CIP. Again, we did not incorporate anything for the tax increment committed to parks and libraries, but we did pick up and count on the tax increment or the impact fees-
Impact fees for parks and libraries.
-from those two project areas.
Right. And that's, the next two slides are dealing with our capital improvement fund, the resources. I won't go through all these numbers. I'll just skip to the 10-year total so that you can see. Sales tax for 10 years is estimated at 38,930,000. The triple flip, which we call the ERAF and MUIO sales tax, at 14.3 million. Show Canyon assessment, 33.9 million. Our local grants, the 2 and 1/4, this is from LA County dealing with freeway park site A. Our rubbish fees, show Canyon, which is the tipping fee of 53.8 million. The transfer from the general fund in total over the 10 years at 17 and 1/4 million. Transfer from public benefit fund of a million and a half. And then here's what Mr. Starbird was talking about, the impact fees for parks and library at 1 million for for parks and for library of 600,000. So you see the total resource, resources over 10 years is slightly over 164 million dollars. And this is just for the capital improvement fund. We have one other fund that we include in our CIP, which is the state gas tax fund. Again, I'll just go down the 10-year total. We have three different gas tax monies that we received, 17 million, 7 and 1/2 million, and 12 and 1/2. We have the AB 29, 28 revenue. What this is, is the sales tax component on all gasoline sales. It has been suspended last year and this year. It is supposed to start again next fiscal year, but this is under the discretion of the governor and the state legislature, that they can still pull that off and use it for whatever purpose and still delay it. They're supposed to pay it back to us, which they did delay it one time, and they did pay us back, but now they're in delay mode again. And with the state looking at anywhere from a 10 billion to 12 billion dollar deficit for next year, I don't think we're going to get our money for next year. But I will revise that as news comes available in the coming months.
As a footnote on that, a meeting I recently attended, it was noted by the group's lobbyist that represents redevelopment agencies, that the Department of Finance is poring over Proposition 1A, which was the Local Revenue Protection Act that was passed the year before last to protect general fund revenues. They have been poring over the wording in Proposition 1A, frankly, to find a loophole through which the state could look again at tapping local resources to meet their 10 to 12 billion dollar deficit that's on the horizon. So we're fortunate that's there, but that doesn't necessarily give us complete assurance that they won't find some way to tap local resources to balance their budget. This could very well be, the initial right out of the chute loss could be this money.
Yeah, easily.
I think we can probably anticipate, we may not see AB 29, 28 money for the next several years until the state gets a handle on its budget.
So what are we doing with that? Are we, we're not including that in our-
No, we've included it, but again, we're going to need to see it each year. To the extent we don't, it's relatively easy for Steve to adjust his contracts when he goes out each year for either street reconstruction or street surfacing. All this money must be used for streets.
Right. In 2008 or this current year, we estimated zero because we knew that it was going to be in delay mode, and we had calculated that they would repay it in '08-'09, so that's why you see the 2.1 million. It was also with the agreement of the Prop 1B bonds was that this would be in delay mode.
So we'll know this next fiscal year what's going to happen in '09.
Right. And then we'll probably put a zero there and probably another zero in '10, and then figure out a way to estimate after that. You see the Prop 1B state bonds of 6.4 million. That's, I put that all into this current year at '08. The cash may be half this year, half next. We'll have to see when we get the second half of the cash.
Now, the state hasn't sold bonds yet, have they, Steve or Ron?
No, they have not issued the bonds.
The state hasn't sold any of those bonds yet, so they don't have the money we anticipated in the upcoming year. Depending on the bond market and the economy, we'll have to wait and see how much they actually initially issue in bonds and how much they can then allocate to local agencies.
Right.
But this is the estimate we've gotten from the state.
Right. The 6.4 million. Correct. And then interest revenue, we always have a cash balance in our gas tax fund, and it does earn interest, so that's just calculated at 300,000 dollars a year. No ups or downs, depending on what happens with the interest rates and what happens with the cash balance in this one. So total resources over 10 years, 57.3 million dollars. The next series of slides go through and just rehash, or, excuse me, just remind the council of what was already adopted in the CIP in late June of 2007. I don't know if council necessarily wants to hear every project again since it's already been adopted.
I think it's good to touch on the key ones, though.
We can go through, and what you have in the PowerPoint is the first five years. If I would put all 10 years on one slide, one, we wouldn't be able to read it, and then the public at home would not be able to read it. So we have it broken down into five-year segments. The major ones on this slide is ADA facility modifications. We have dedicated 4,150,000 dollars over the next 10 years. This was, this was already approved last June.
Keep this one in mind because there's a supplement in the supplemental budget as well that you add on top of this.
Correct. Then we have three programs for streets. This is over and above what's in the gas tax. So we had already adopted and approved 5 million for street resurfacing, an additional 5 million for gutter, and another 5 million for street reconstruction, for a total of 15 million to street work over and above our gas tax money.
So gas tax each year is roughly 4 million. This million and a half brings us to 5 and 1/2 million. And again, you'll see in the supplemental CIP, we add additional funding on top of that.
Correct. Let's see. Show Canyon landfill reserve, this is just setting aside money of 15 million dollars for the post-closure maintenance of our landfill once it actually closes. And we actually do set aside the cash for that.
We're obligated to do this by state law.
Correct. Park upgrades and maintenance, we have dedicated 8 million dollars already in the adopted budget over the next 10 years. And this is not dedicated to any one particular park, per se. This is just setting aside money for park upgrades and maintenance of our current parks.
In addition to this are the projects that, at this point in time, have already been identified, completion of Cedar Mini Park, the Doran Project, I forget how many are out there.
Right.
Yeah, the ARC. So this is over and above anything that's currently identified on the drawing board.
Right. So here's one, Central Park renovation of, this is an additional 600,000 in the next 10 years, over and above what's already been appropriated in prior years. Here's your Maryland Mini Park of a million, Cedar Mini Park of 1,150,000. So those are those specifically named mini parks. And in addition to that catch-all project of just new park upgrades. Library projects, renovate existing libraries, just set aside 2 and 1/4 million over the 10 years to deal with the current buildings that the city already has, libraries as needs arise. Not, again, not dedicated to a specific library. Let's see, 10-year total, nothing really here.
Small projects.
Right. So you can see the total for the CIP fund that we already approved was almost 54 and 1/2 million dollars. Our gas tax is just three programs that Public Works administers every year, and you can see the total over the 10 years is 50,855,000 dollars. And that was what's already approved. Any questions on that? I'll go into our unfunded request, again, looking at five years, and this is just the timing of when we thought these projects would need the resources. I'll skip over to the 10-year. And again, these are, this is from our August 28 session with council. We had so many revisions on this unfunded list as projects came on and other ones kind of fell off. I call this our apex of that discussion, where we had the most projects on and we had all of the numbers, even be it the ranges from a low to a high. So for example, Montrose Library just shows zero across all 10 years, and we did not plug in monies for any specific year. We just gave it a loan number and a high number. The high number is at 13 million. So that's why you see that number in the 10-year total, and it's not necessarily a summation of all the zeros in the columns beforehand, because we had not broken it out for council like that. So the 10-year total column is either the summation of the 10 years, or it's the high estimate that we had the discussions with council in August about. So Montrose Library of 13 million, Fire Station 29 of 13, 8, Rock Haven property of 21. Again, this is the high estimate on the Rock Haven, which would include the purchase price and the rehab. It can definitely be less than that. Fire Station 26, we took off the table. Fire training facility, half a million. Crime analysis, 60 grand. Street rehab, the request was for 60 million dollars over the next 10 years.
In addition to the gas tax and the allocation that we had already approved in the CIP?
Correct. So in addition to the 54 million plus the 15 million, that is in the CIP. There was a request for- There was a request for an additional 60. Street names, signs, replacement, a million 750,000. Next series of projects, Central Avenue Rehab, 12 million. San Fernando Road Rehab, 20 million. Again, these are, if it's not the summation in the years, it's the high estimate of what we thought we would need. The San Fernando Road, I believe, had figures in it for a median. So, and if we don't do that, then that obviously saves us a few million dollars on the median project. ADA upgrades, the request was for 25 million over the 10 years. City entry markers, 200 grand. Neighborhood Services Field Facility, 100 grand. Pacific Park Neighborhood Pool, 8,155, and then Doran Street Project of a million. Again, just a rehash of, you know, the months of discussion, tax defaulted properties of a million. Open space, Freeway Park Site A, Freeway Park Site C. We discuss these projects a lot, but we never really even pin down an estimated number. We threw out different numbers depending on what use we would put the park sites to, be it soccer fields or so forth, but we never really pinned down numbers. So that's why these numbers are zeros. I really couldn't, you know, depending on two soccer fields at Park Site A or three soccer fields at Park Site A, I didn't put in any numbers here.
We, just a note, we do, and we did pin it down in the CIP we're going to recommend you approve. And your discussion, the discussion CIP that you had in mid-October had these numbers inserted at a specific level, and that's what we addressed in the plan. So we're running quickly through history here.
Right, right. Community Aquatic Center, this was the high estimate on the Community Aquatic Center of 58 and 1/4 million dollars. Again, high estimate. Columbus Soccer Field, 3 and 1/2.
That was, didn't we decide that was a little bit astronomical?
That was astronomical, but that was, I didn't have a lower estimate.
That's why frankly it's not...
Hate to have that number there, because you look at it and you say, oh my God, that's...
Can I encourage you not to get hung up on these numbers? I mean, we really moved past these, and the discussion budget had much more realistic numbers that were attached to it. So don't spend a lot of time focusing on these figures.
Columbus Soccer Field, 3 and 1/2 million. And then soccer fields, again, we had discussions on about 3 and 1/2 million for soccer fields, and we didn't necessarily nail down, do we need one more, two more, three more? In our August discussions, we did nail that down when we went through the recommended CIP list. And she, I, this, at this point in August, it was Glendale High School tennis courts, and we have subsequently not going to have those tennis courts there. But again, this is our August discussion, 225,000. Dog parks, 485,000. Hoover High Stadium, that was a discussion, again, there was numbers being floated around. New park development of 17 million, supplemental park upgrades of 2 and 1/2 million. Mountain Noakes Property was also discussed, the Banano Property was also discussed. New Northwest Glendale Library, that was taken off the table. Full Branch Library of 17,4 million. Central Park Phase 2, 1,350,000. Brand Library, 5.1. Old Police Building, this was the high estimate of 5 million, depending on what we wanted to do with the old police building. That is in our recommended list and for a much lesser number than this 5 million dollars. City Hall renovation of 2 million, citywide document management system of 600,000. And then citywide Wi-Fi system, again, this was the high estimate on the Wi-Fi system of 5 million. Increased transfer to our wireless communications fund, this is our radio system for mainly public safety, but also for GWP and Public Works and other departments of the city, 12 and 1/2 million over the 10 years. And then remodel permit services center of 700,000. So the total unfunded was 160.6, but even then, there's some numbers that weren't calculated in there as well, so it was even higher. And as Mayor Nigery noted, some of those numbers are even inflated from, we had discussed later.
Yes, I know we discussed the wireless at length, but I guess it never dawned on me that a lot of the uses by the utility, our utilities. Is there any way that can be...
They are paying for it separately. This is just for...
This is just the general fund's share of the cost. Oh yeah, there's another...
There's more cost out there.
Oh yeah.
I'm sorry, I misspoke about GWP.
Yes, it is a huge system, and one that the amount of resources that you consume each year in order to keep up with technology and service needs is just horrendous.
And Verdugo also contributes.
Yeah.
Verdugo Communications, Tri-City.
Emelda, can't you find a way...
Cans and strings.
Invent a new way. I mean, if everyone had a, if everyone had a cellphone, I'm just speaking, obviously off the top of my head, isn't industry-wide, nationwide, isn't there some way that, some innovation is coming up that can relieve the cities from the extreme burden of keeping up with this wireless technology by one or two manufacturers that really, you know, do a good job for their shareholders, but not much for the residents of the cities?
Well, the Project 24 compliance could in time create more competition. Project 24 compliance is the federal government's effort to say, you know what, no more proprietary platforms. Let's get it to the point that we have a standard set of project, of product standards, so we can have more competition in the industry. But that's going to take some time to see the result of that. One would think with the way computers have gone and computer power...
I mean, that's what kills me.
That, well, except it's kind of like computers, you still go out to buy a computer today, and you're getting, I don't know, multiples of the power you purchased before, but you're still spending quite a bit of money on computer power, like telephones.
And what ended up happening is that as new means of communication were made available in the market, people just saw them as a complimentary way of communicating, not as a substitute. In other words, they said, now I have more means of, more backup and more means of communicating and staying in touch, faster, and more of them, and more available. So it's as if the need for availability and speed has gone up at the same time that the means of communication become available.
I mean, the next Bill Gates of the world is going to be the person that cracks into this wireless communications with a simple technology, cost-effective, I mean.
And then Motorola.
And the reason why the...
That's a Motorola, yeah.
And the reason why the radio system is so expensive comparatively speaking with the other means of communication is because of the high reliability. And that's where it's at. Because the cell phones, even though most of our public safety personnel have them, they are not reliable in terms of how quickly they can deliver the messages. Sometimes they are not, the messages don't get delivered right away, and sometimes the system is not available.
So what we've seen in the radio system is the use of technology to get more effective utilization of your frequencies, that we used to all fight about. Frequencies were like water. We fought about it over the years, trying to get more frequencies so you could meet your communication needs. Now, and ISIS is a very good example, the use of technology to do a more effective job of utilizing frequencies and sharing with other agencies, so our range can be significantly expanded, you can talk to more people, there's interoperability, but it's still a very expensive system.
Just a safer environment.
It needs to be upgraded. It's expensive, and we were upgrading it every 10 years or less.
But in the end, I think that the result of all of this is just safer, more safety around. Because, for example, there were officers that before they didn't have the coverage or the access, basically the coverage, and they were out there on their own in some parts of, not just outside the city, but in the city. There were some areas that were not covered before. And in speaking with them, they were like, okay, I'm on my own. I know that I'm on my own in this area. For example, before, we had coverage there up by La Crescena, that area, that residential, high-end area over there.
Mark Ridge.
Yeah, exactly. It's just like, I'm here and I'm just hoping that nothing happens. And like that, we had other areas in the city. So in the end of all this, we have a safer city for our officers, for our residents, for all of us.
It's interesting, the 1940 travelogue of Glendale that we were showing on GTV6 there for a while. They're showing our state-of-the-art fire dispatch system. And the call comes into the station from a pull box that's on a power pole, and the person who's pulled it stands by the pull box. The first responding chief officer gets to the pull box, the young man steps on the running board and holds on and proceeds to give him directions on how to get to the fire. That was the state-of-the-art communications of its day, and we bragged about its reliability. It's come a long way, but it is expensive technology.
And it's the, it's not just voice, it's data, and the data is becoming more important, and it's very interactive with the whole call dispatch system and the CAD record management system. And it just makes it all the more complex to be able to deal with data. And data's becoming all more important from the standpoint now of plans of houses and a whole safety elements and what the officers or fire department can expect to encounter when they go out to a site. It has just become very complex.
So seven years ago, we had to face up to the realization that our predecessors hadn't been setting money aside to replace an aging wireless communication system. And there was fear that if any of the components of our system failed, we weren't going to be able to talk to our police and firefighters out on the street. It was that bad. So we had to go back into the CIP, push projects back, take projects off, and find 18 million dollars to build a new system. We spent the 18 million dollars over four years, completely rebuilding and upgrading our system. And then, of course, Emelda says, if you don't want to be sitting in the same spot 10 years from now with an aging system that is on the verge of failure, you better keep putting money aside to replace the units on an ongoing basis as it's needed to upgrade the technology, or somebody years from now will be sitting here wondering why we didn't address it and how they're going to find what will then be tens of millions of dollars to address problems in the system. So we've tried to face up the need to replace it on an ongoing basis.
Please keep us posted, Emelda. At your, if you hear anything in your conferences or seminars or communications with the, you know, with the other department heads, because we're putting away a huge amount of money.
Lot of resources.
Thank you. Just had to rant a little bit, so.
We've ranted ourselves quite a bit as we've wrestled with this number. We'd much rather be spending it on something else.
So that was our grand list of unfunded CIP projects. Here's our recommended additional CIP projects. They all come from the unfunded list that we just reviewed. And we have 12 slides here to go through. Again, there's really six. It's broken out into five-year segments each. So the first set of projects, Montrose Branch Library, 5 and 1/2...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ron. Just so it's clear in my mind.
Sure.
This first group that we just went through are the unfunded requests. This is now the additional unfunded requests.
What he just, no, no, what he, what, he's followed sort of the evolution of our CIP. There was the CIP that you adopted, which was sort of the minimum CIP. Then he went through the initial numbers that we considered back when we started this unfunded process. That's why those numbers were so large. Now we're down to, this is the discussion CIP that your staff took away and found a means of balancing the CIP program. You reviewed the resource adjustments to balance it. Now we're going to run through the projects that would receive additional funding in that supplemental CIP and how that's been balanced. He ran through the original numbers in the unfunded list, just so you'd have a quick comparison with where we have arrived at on these projects to recommend to you.
You said we were at the apex.
Correct.
The first group was the highest estimate for any project and all projects that were discussed.
Correct.
Now we're getting into the refined.
This is your recommendation from the city manager and the management staff to council for funding...
Based on our, based on your understanding of our direction.
Right, of the discussions with council, correct. So, okay, here we go. Montrose Branch Library receives 5 and 1/2 million. You have it in your PowerPoint on what year that is. It's broken out into 750,000 in '09, and then the remainder, 4,750,000 in '11.
Go back to, yeah, essentially design in '09, construction in 2011. What we've done here, we've anticipated, Montrose Library, Fire Station 29 stay in place. They stay where they are, and there's significant rehabilitation and construction to ensure that their useful lives will go well beyond the current 10-year horizon. What that is, I don't know, but it'll go well beyond the 10-year horizon. And we've essentially pinned a budget of 11 million dollars for the entire joint project, whether it's 5 and 1/2 each, who knows, that remains to be seen, but we do what we could to extend the life of those projects as far, those facilities as far as we can for the 11 million dollars. And from the, from some of the original estimates, that saved us in the neighborhood of 11 to 20 million dollars, depending on which option might have been picked.
Correct. John?
Well, I have to ask the question, how do we do that?
How do we do...
Well, I mean, as everyone's aware, the numbers have changed a lot as we've gone through the process. How do we, how exactly, can somebody give us just a rough idea of how we're able to make a fire station and the library meet the needs for the next however many years now at 5 and 1/2 million apiece? And how do we do that staying on-site with the same footprint?
Likelihood is we'll need to acquire some additional land on the site to get maneuverability and space, and there's a possibility for that as we speak.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Draymond, the plan, as we discussed it, is we will take the 11 million dollars and we'll design a building within that budget. The plan is generally to expand the library, potentially purchase some properties in the area, around the parking lot area, potentially, and to rebuild the engine room of the fire station, expand it out, because basically it's too small, and remodel the existing facility on the fire station side as it exists. That's about what we'll bring in for 11 million.
Where would the funds come from to purchase the additional property?
This budget.
No, I mean, where do we see it? Is that in the 5 and 1/2?
Yes, it's in the 11 million dollar total.
And is there a way that we know how much of that is for actual rehab of facility? In other words, that 5 and 1/2 million for Fire Station 29, how much of that is rehab and how much of that is potentially?
I don't know. We haven't done a complete structural, or I mean, a complete architectural rendering of the 11 million dollar cost.
Well, they've looked at, they've looked at it initially to believe that the substructure is sound enough that if we can get the space, they can make the existing structure work.
Yeah, the library is an expansion, considerable expansion, do a second story, community room and such as that. It's still in concept, and all of that concept will be redesigned within an 11 million dollar budget, a combination of the library and the fire station. However, who gets five and who gets six is still being worked out when they redesign the whole place.
I understand that, but I'm not, I'm not articulating this well. If part of this is predicated on picking up some extra property, and that cost of that property is included in those two numbers, how much of that, of those two numbers put together, that 11 million, is for actual physical improvements of the facility?
But we plan...
How much is for...
Property, yeah.
Property.
It depends how much property. We plan 500,000 dollars for each of the two contiguous properties around the parking lot, but that's up in negotiation.
There's one piece on the market, so we pegged this budget to what the property's currently being listed for.
Correct.
And it's possible we'd only acquire one piece.
Yeah.
And the likelihood is, this doesn't get us a new fire station and a new library. And we've been somewhat arbitrary to say, although for the very long term, we'd like to have the resources to build a new library and a new fire station, this is, this is an acceptable fallback position, and we pegged, call it somewhat arbitrary, but a bit of an arbitrary budget of 11 million dollars to try and address what we can in the two facilities without building new ones, but an appreciable investment to try and improve... try and improve their serviceability and extend their lives appreciably. But we don't, we don't have, we don't have plans, we don't have even an architect's rendering. This is an estimate of what we think it'll take to get us an appreciable extension on life of those two facilities and improve their serviceability.
Okay. Well, as I've mentioned before, and I know these are just for planning purposes, but I am for building a new, uh, branch library at Rockhaven. I think that's the ideal, uh, solution. It's a large parcel of land and, uh, at the Rockhaven site, there's ample room for a library. I think it'll invigorate, enliven that area, it becomes more of a draw in terms of cultural pursuits, et cetera, et cetera. So for planning purposes, I'm interested in, uh, if we have to purchase, or it would be a good idea to purchase any contiguous, uh, land next to the current library and fire station, but, uh, I think we should move any, uh, library to, uh, to the Rockhaven property.
Mr. Draymond?
Well, I think I'm pretty much on the record agreeing with that, but there's a reason, another reason. Um, and my concern is, is that if we're looking at a, a life of a new fire station or library on that site for ten to fifteen years, or some number, that we're not sure what that is, at that point, whether it's ten years down the line, or twelve, or fifteen, we're going to be looking for a place to build a new library or a new fire station, uh, because we're going to be right back to the same spot where we'll be saying, well, uh, we have to rehab this or rebuild. Really, the answer is a new fire station. So, so where do we go with that if we, if we spend eleven million dollars to rehab a, a fire station and a library side by side on the same spot? Uh, that being the case, I would like to see us build a library on the Rockhaven site and acquire that property. That will, at some point, and that will allow the, uh, the, uh, fire station to expand on the existing site without acquiring new land ten, ten years from now. Uh, I'd rather purchase the land now than purchase the land in ten to fifteen years when, uh, when we don't know what the prices of property, land, well, we do know in general what they'll be, they'll be much higher. Um, so anyway, that's, uh, I realize that isn't the exact discussion for the moment, but, uh, for me to be able to say, yes, I would agree to, to these numbers, uh, I would be, it means to me that, that, that my interest is going to be in trying to purchase Rockhaven, not a piece of Rockhaven, because, uh, we'd be exactly in this spot in ten to fifteen years saying, well, where do we go to build a new fire station?
We, uh, we've been putting together a number of estimates based on the dynamics and changes that have gone with the Rockhaven plan. Uh, fire station rehab, a completely rebuilt fire station, uh, combination with the library, rebuilding the library and the fire station on the same site, as well as the original discussion about moving the library over to Rockhaven and rebuilding the fire station. All those, these are, these are an estimate of what we can do. We can remodel for five and a half million, uh, on the site without significant changes to the building other than the engine room being rebuilt. Uh, but on the other hand, to build a new fire station would be in the eleven to twelve to thirteen million dollar range for a long range.
The number we had, Mr. Draymond, was about fourteen million dollars for new fire station and about thirteen million for a library. If done in conjunction with Rockhaven, we were saying eleven million for a library and two million for rehab to use adjoining buildings. So we have about a tw, it's called a twenty-five to twenty-seven million dollar cost on two new facilities, as opposed to making do with what we have on this site for about eleven. So a lot of this came down to just capacity. We needed to find some way to begin to bring this into balance by finding something more than a half million here, a half million there. We were, we were chewing up money in, in a ten million dollar clip, so to do the full Montrose Branch, do the full fire station, uh, to do the commitment to Rockhaven just began to push us so far apart on, on numbers that things like streets, or other parks, or a library was going to have to, uh, to take a hit or find other resources to bring into the picture.
John?
Well, I understand, and I appreciate the difficulty, believe me, uh, all the way around. Uh, that, that isn't my, uh, that isn't my problem at the moment. I understand all that. Uh, what I'm saying, however, is when we build a new fire station or a new library or both years down the line, the cost is going to be greater. When we acquire property for that, the cost is going to be greater. So, uh, I'm inclined to support this if we are saying we're going to look at the Rockhaven property, not a sliver of it or a segment of it, but the property as a whole. Because once we commit to say we're going to take, uh, a third of the property, or a half of the property, or a quarter of the property, we may not be able to put that library there.
Well, you're going to have that discussion in closed session today. We did present to you in the original CIP that range on Rockhaven from purchase entire site, do portion of the site, don't participate in it at all.
Right.
So was everywhere from zero to, depending on the level of rehab over a number of years, uh, ten, twelve, fifteen million dollars. I hear what you're saying as comfortable with this approach so long as we're preserving some options years down the road that Rockhaven could provide a potential site for a library when it gets to the point that this rehab has now run its useful life.
Yes, exactly.
Well, we would obviously like to build a fire station for forty-year life or fifty-year life, but, uh, we're-
Well, let me just say, I, I don't feel comfortable with that. I mean, I just don't. We have the opportunity to purchase Rockhaven. We have the opportunity to build a new library there. We have the opportunity to rehab that existing fire station into something that would really be substantial, because now we are not worried about the library any longer. Then we have an ability to recoup some of our investments with that lot across the street with the Ford dealership lot in terms of a commercial venture with a grocery store, et cetera. And for me, we should do that once and for all. What's the point of doing a ten- or fifteen-year rehab and try to force library and fire station together? We have the opportunity with Rockhaven, once and for all, to get a good-sized property, put a library in there, and, um, to me, I, I'm not interested in these other scenarios. That's the one scenario I'm, I'm interested in, and I think financially it works out. It's not this huge amount of money, and one of the reasons is that, uh, like I say, we have an ability across the street from the current fire station at the Ford dealership to, to literally make some, uh, money.
Mr. Starbuck?
Let me suggest we look at the big numbers. By my count, the difference in, in acquiring the entire Rockhaven site and building a new library and building a new fire station probably has a differential of about twenty million dollars. Now, that does not include, uh, sale proceeds from the Paradise Ford lot, and we also had that figure in one of your earlier CIPs, but frankly, we tried to be conservative and not assume that Paradise Ford would be driven by trying to get a property value. Uh, my experience has been when we join hands with the private sector in order to get what we want, we may have to do a long-term land lease, or we may have to do something else to get the right kind of use in there. So we haven't presumed any value to Paradise Ford. So to that extent, it's a little bit conservative in our estimates. But the, take Rockhaven at its, at its asking price by the owners, that's roughly ten and a half million dollars.
Why would we do that?
Well, we can do something less. Just, that's what we had in the original CIP, was about ten and a half million dollars for, for its purchase if we purchased the entire site. A lot of it has to do with what you think we could acquire it for. And that's better a conversation in closed session.
And we need to keep this just on the, the very general terms, because the details, I think, we'd like to get into in closed session. And my point at the beginning of this whole discussion was, if there's any changes to this, do we have the flexibility? If priorities change or circumstances change, do we, as a council, have the flexibility to come back next week, the week after, and say, juggle the numbers and reallocate funding and all that?
You do. And it might be useful then, as we go through this, to point out where we have flexibility to move numbers around, what kind of capacity we have built into this, rather than talk about specific acquisition, specific costs. But I think the Montrose Library Fire Station, the eleven million here is juxtaposed to original numbers that were in the twenty-five million dollar range for two new facilities. So you've got about a fourteen million dollar spread just on the two facilities that we haven't accounted for in the CIP, and we need to go back and find a way to make that work if there's not account for what may be a larger allocation for Rockhaven.
Well, um, in terms of the fire station, my feeling is if the library vacates, I think the bones in that building are more than adequate to do a great rehab, and, uh, I can't imagine that it would run fourteen million to convert the existing, uh, building into a first-class, uh, fire station. I mean, there's a lot of square footage.
No, the original estimate that we had for, uh, rehabbing the fire station, which is basically to rebuild the engine room, because it just isn't big enough, keep the library structured as it is and expand its use, and then keep the fire station pretty much as it is, as it is with an internal remodel, was about five and a half million.
Right.
But again, that's, it's an older building, it's got a great structure to it, uh, it's a very, you know, concrete port-in-place building, it's a very well-built building, but it's got a lot of inside problems.
Yes.
All that stuff, yeah. So that was our original estimate for that particular angle of it. No additional property or anything like that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Ron, where were we?
Well, let me ask here, what, what, do we leave this as it is until we get a clearer picture on Rockhaven?
Mr. Dray?
Well, um, this is why it's, it's confusing to me, and I've been asking some questions as to what the, the, uh, the desired outcome is today from the three of us. What I'm comfortable doing is saying I understand what is presented here and why. Um, I'm certainly prepared to move on and keep, you know, see the rest of this and, and so on, and then we're supposed to go into, we're scheduled to go into closed session later today to discuss some, in some greater detail, issues related to Rockhaven and so on.
Right.
So, uh, you know, but I think we're all on the record as to how we feel, and, uh, I'm not prepared to cast a vote and say, yes, this is my recommendation yet.
Okay. So this component of the CIP, we'll just leave with a question mark on it?
Well, I'm, I'm prepared to cast a vote, uh, and I was planning on modifying the, uh, the way this is, uh, uh, laid out. So I'm prepared to cast a vote in terms of what I was talking about, uh, earlier, full purchase of Rockhaven, rehab the fire station, and new library at the Rockhaven site. That's what I'd like to do today. I mean, if we're going to be casting votes, that's where I would, where I would want to vote.
Well, is there a, is there a, I mean, can, can I ask my colleague to explain to me then what, what he's proposing?
Right. I am proposing-
I don't mean in terms of, I mean, I understand you, I'm talking about in terms of the numbers, what you're proposing. You're saying shifting this.
Well, if the, uh, well, I-
But, yeah, let me see, let me see if I can. I, I think that takes us back to a scenario we talked about at an earlier time. Um, and that had approximately, um, about twelve or thirteen million dollars for new library construction. And we had assumed that there would be about two million dollars for rehab of existing buildings on the Rockhaven site, of those principally on the east end of the property. So that puts library back there at about thirteen million dollars, recognizing that part of the rehab of Rockhaven also has to be to get some of those buildings that are rehabbed in a condition to, uh, serve some use along with the library. Because you might recall, the library's really reduced its square footage to a little bit smaller building, anticipated the use of some, some of the rehab buildings. And Ron, if you can follow the numbers, correct me here.
Sure.
We'd leave Fire Station 29 in at five and a half million.
Yes.
Recognizing that the fire station can't happen until sometime after a new library is built, so library then moves off the site. So you're really talking about numbers at least five years off on the horizon, I suspect. So we'd have the fire station at five and a half, Montrose Library would be back in at about thirteen million, let's just call it all in for thirteen million. And then we've yet to talk about Rockhaven, but we discussed that in closed session, and that number would probably need to change. And could be a phased approach, as Mr., um, Draymond had suggested at one of our earlier sessions. If indeed we acquired the whole Rockhaven site, that would likely be a, a phased rehabilitation development over a number of years.
Okay. Well, I'm propos, I'm prepared to vote for that, uh, option today. I mean, if we need to, if we need to move the-
We, we just need to feel there's a, there's a, there's a consensus here to include that in the plan, again, recognizing that we have this for timing, beginning design in 2009. That means we're not, we're not going to begin this, this next fiscal year. Rockhaven settles out, we could very well be back here revisiting this whole scenario again, uh, in the upcoming fiscal year, depending on what happens.
Well, I mean, I certainly support that. This is what we've been talking about, and certainly what I've been talking about since I opened my mouth about this six, six months ago? No? Five months ago? Um, I just, uh, I, you know, I, it's just, I guess my lack of comfort, Mr. Quintero, is simply that there's three of us sitting here. That's my-
That's a very bad point.
As you, as you mentioned at the last capital improvement, that you also felt uncomfortable moving forward when we can't seem to field the rest of our group here, so.
Well, that's a very good point. If we don't, uh, you know, need to do it-
We're also running out of a year. That's, so, you know? So yes, I would, I would support this as well, and, um, you know, with the understanding that there's, as the mayor points out, there's a possibility that, uh, the rest of the colleagues will come in and say, no, 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 let's, let's revote, so, if they felt differently.
Well, the only other thing I, I want to say is all the, Mr. Quintero's suggestion is premised on the fact that Rockhaven, uh, number one, is for sale, and number two, that we can come to terms with them on the sale of it. Those are two assumptions that I think we need to discuss in closed session as to whether they're valid assumptions, um, as well as other options that council may explore in obtaining it outside of an arms-length transaction. I don't want to, and I, and I do think that that's closed-session stuff, uh, but if this proposal would be based as a-
Direction?
Contingent, well, let's say contingent on the, the city obtaining Rockhaven, then this, this, and this, I have no problem with putting those numbers out, but.
Let me suggest we, we look at this as a planning figure at this point. If, if you're willing to plan around this scenario, then, then we will need to go figure out a way, uh, to either reduce some other projects or to find some resources in order to make that planning scenario fit. That doesn't mean it won't change, uh, in the upcoming months, but, uh, we can certainly plan around that scenario, which, which looks to me like, based on these numbers, increases these numbers about six or seven million dollars on total.
Yes. I mean, that's what the math looks like.
Right. Right. So if you want, we'll use that as a planning figure and, um, go through the balance of this, and you can begin to see how in all likelihood this will begin to shake out, recognizing, as I mentioned before, we have built, I think, um, quite a bit of cushion in this plan. For example, if, if tax increment for parks and libraries is created, and if we have between fourteen to twenty-one million dollars over the next ten years, then there's some capacity there. We have four million dollars in the uncommitted contingency, uh, yet-to-be-planned projects, there's four million dollars over ten years to be built in that kind of cushion.
Library impact fees that could be higher?
Library impact fees could be higher, park impact fees could be higher than we've anticipated. So an additional, an additional five or six million dollars in the total isn't going to, uh, throw everything out of kilter. It's, it's a level that we can probably deal with, but it's going to take some adjustment in other areas.
Mr. Draymond?
Well, then, uh, it would seem to me that at least at this moment, there is a consensus for changing the, at least the game plan at this point to, uh, plug those numbers in and see where we end up.
Okay. I think the only adjustment needed is on Montrose Branch Library, we'll just plug in thirteen million there.
Okay. How about the property purchase?
Well, why don't, why don't we leave any adjustment there until we have our closed session discussion?
We can always add money while after and just leave the capacity.
Again, you, you're not adopting the CIP, you're, you're giving us what you'd like us to plan around at this point. Okay?
Okay. Let's-
Okay, let's move on.
Okay. Fire Station 26, again, that's off the table till July 1. Fire training regional facility, we did fund at $500,000 in fiscal year 2010. The crime analysis system, which is a component of our geographic information system, i.e. GIS, $60,000 in next fiscal year, 2009. And then here's some additional money for street rehabilitation of $0 for this current year, '07, '08, but then we start at a million and a half, and then we ramp up to a total of 21 million over the 10 years. So we started a million and a half, and then it grows, and it makes a jump in 2015. We had a figure of 21 million to fund, and this is just the balancing between the fiscal years on when the resources are coming in to keep each fiscal year in positive territory, if you will.
Why no allocation for '08? Have we already allocated in there?
Because we have bond money. We're expecting bond money.
Yeah, we have the 6.4 million.
Believe me, if you wanted to allocate it, Steve would love to have it, and he'd use it, but our sense is if the bond money comes through, he's got $6 million, and it's way to pick up a million and a half. Keep in mind that the existing approved CIP budget has a million and a half dollars a year. So a million and a half a year in the existing CIP, plus these numbers.
Plus the $4 million in gas tax.
Plus the $4 million in gas tax. So we're running at that point up to roughly $7 to $8 million a year. Out at the end, you're running four, five, that's $6 million plus the four, about $10 million in street. Again, doesn't get Steve everything he'd like, but it's a significant improvement over where we've been.
Okay. That's our first set of numbers. Here's our second group, street name signs replacement. This is a new program in Public Works. It starts in 2010, and we dedicate $175,000 a year for new street name signs throughout the whole city, so.
We noted before, this is a requirement, Steve. And there is an indication, I don't think, of how soon you have to meet the requirement, so we've just said, you know, we're going to tackle $175,000 a year until it's all done.
There's a new requirement under the manual for uniform traffic control devices. It does not specify you have to have it done, you have to have an inventory done within a two-year period, which isn't a problem. But this is an incremental way for us to get at it. We have about 4,400 intersections that require the street name signs, so this will allow us to pick away at that.
Central Avenue Rehab is funded from 2010 to 2012, $12 million. Again, the redevelopment agency is the resource for this project.
And this would, Steve, this would, this rehab would physically begin to break pavement when? What year?
If we, we could probably start working around that 2011 year is where we could start getting into it. We'd probably take all of 2010 to design it. It's not a real extensive design, not, I don't believe as complicated as Brand was. So I imagine that by 2011, 2011, we could be getting into the construction of that.
And the Americana brand is going to open in April, March of this year?
Yes. So they'll have their portion done from Central up to Broadway, Broadway, and then we would pick it up from there in these outlying years and finish it all the way up to Ticklin Oaks.
Now, in terms of your engineering and your studies and so forth, will, I mean, I personally would like to have at least a year and a half or two years to sort of observe what the traffic patterns are like now with this new huge project.
After the Americana.
Yeah. So does this give you, does this give the engineers enough time to get a good feel for what could be done, should be done?
Well, you'll have three quarters of '08, if it opens on time, and I fully expect that it would, you'd have three quarters of '08 and all of '09 to make those observations, and that would get you through essentially two holiday seasons, which are critical periods too. So I think you're going to have enough time.
So you'd have two holiday seasons to sort of monitor the traffic, do studies, whatever.
Right.
And then you would go into a design phase.
Correct, correct. We'd match it up with the mobility plan, see if the numbers are coming out right, see if our widening scenarios are appropriate.
If I can, the importance of that is, I think, is much from the standpoint of seeing what the trend's going to be, but also I suspect the first year is likely going to be mayhem. I mean, and then it's going to settle down. People are going to learn how to get in and out. The, the normal annual visits are going to level off. The first year, it's probably going to be nuts in and around the gallery and the Americana. Then people are going to learn where to go, how to get there, and things will settle down to more even keel in year two.
And if it comes down to needing a little more time to look at it, we'll push a little bit and watch it a little bit longer. Nothing says that we have to, to start designing 2010.
Okay, now, in terms of the pavement itself, and I have been purposely driving up and down Central on a regular basis, anticipating this decision. The pavement's in pretty good shape. It's a little bit spotty up towards, I guess, Lexington, et cetera, but the pavement's not in bad shape. I mean, I'm, I'm just questioning, is it that when you begin to do widening, et cetera, that you need to go ahead and do the whole thing? I mean, sorry, Seal won't do it, or?
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, at a minimum, that's going to need to be resurfaced. So if there's areas that we can simply grind and resurface, we'll try to do that. You're right, Central is in better shape than Brand was. Didn't get the.
I meant is.
It may be is.
And it, it, it hasn't taken the same amount of wear, so it's not essentially a full reconstruction. We will in areas where you have to widen, you take it out, you're taking, taking curb gutter and sidewalk in some cases out further than that. But where we can get away with grinding and resurfacing, we'll certainly do that. Intersections probably at a minimum reconstructed. They take a beating on the cross traffic from the heavy trucks. We concreted or used concrete on several of the intersections when we did Brand, so we'll evaluate that as well.
San Fernando Road Rehab is not funded in this program. ADA upgrades, this is in addition to what we are currently doing for ADA upgrades on an annual, so we have.
The existing CIP has $400,000 approved. This takes it to $650,000 a year, and this is supplemental to ADA upgrades that would occur in every Public Works, Parks, Library project that we would undertake. So in addition to all of the curb ramping that's done every time Public Works does a street sidewalk project, or ADA upgrades on every facility, improvement upgrade, new construction, parks, libraries, new police building, all those ADA requirements will be met as part of the projects. In addition to that, anything that doesn't fall into a project that needs to be addressed would be in the, with this would be $650,000 a year in ADA.
In terms of San Fernando Road, we really don't have any plans, or we haven't discussed San Fernando Road south of, say, Broadway, right? I mean, that's an area that.
As Mr. Allers had alluded to, we were throwing some, some ideas about San Fernando Road around. It included some pretty significant upgrades, whether that's medians with street furniture and so forth. What we've looked at it as, from essentially Doran all the way to the LA border, it needs to be redone from a strictly Public Works structural standpoint. When we come back to you, this Prop 1B is kind of an interesting funding source. What they do is, you come to council, say, we've got a project that we anticipate using the money for, and they fund it. It's not funded in arrears. It is interesting in that respect. We've put San Fernando Road on that list as the street where we can spend that money. And that's going through, and as I said, doing the pavement, doing any of the substructure work that needs to be done, curb gutter, sidewalk along that way, and that's the full stretch, the full remainder of it. If you recall, we did, we did West from, from Doran to the Burbank border. This is going, would be going the opposite direction to the LA border, so from 134 Freeway at Doran all the way to our city terminus on the other side.
It seems like something could be done, I don't know, just to sort of upgrade, beautify the, the area, whether it's planting trees or something.
Well, certainly taking, like, the tree scape project on one side, and then dealing with the railroad track side, at least as far as that goes, certainly something that we want to look at as well.
Well, when we do our, when we take that vote and make the final decision along the railroad, that's going to extend all the way down to almost Pacific, correct? I mean, it's not going to stop.
Goes, does go to Pacific, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I'm, right, I mean, from, let's say from Pacific South, from Broadway and Pacific South. I think we should take a look at that, see what we can do.
Yes, we'll definitely look at some options for that, tree scaping at a minimum, but some other things that we might be able to do. You know, there's ways that you can incorporate some level of median in certain areas that allow you to, just to get some, some planting out and kind of offset the starkness of a wide, heavily-used street. So we'll, we'll look at those as well. But definitely, the street needs.
Around San Fernando Road and Los Feliz, I mean, there's actually some upgrading going on from furniture stores to just different businesses that are starting to change. I think it's that Harley-Davidson community that started upgrading the area.
There you go.
Thank you. Ron, are we going to be able to finish this? I have two speakers, and I'd really like to finish this.
Sure.
As soon as possible, so.
Will do, Mr. Mayor. New program, city entry markers, starting in fiscal year 2010, $50,000 a year is in this recommended. Neighborhood Services Facility is not funded. Pacific Park Neighborhood Pool, this is in addition to what is already been gathered together for this project. They need an addition of $1,004.
Oh, we got, we have to break until we get the quorum back.
Sorry. Thanks, Scott. I needed a couple more of those on Saturday.
So we're in a brief recess.
Oh, sorry, maybe we're GCLA need this. I needed more on the O than I did on the D.
The D did very well.
The Ravens were wishing somebody hadn't called a timeout last night.
That was disgusting. So we'll, we'll recess until we regain our. Okay, let's, let's go back on and.
I left the room, there was a CIP discussion. I came back as a football game.
There are a lot of similarities.
I apologize for breaking up the quorum, Mr. Mayor. However, better than that, we'd have to add to the custodial fees if I didn't, so.
Neighborhood Services Facility is not funded. Pacific Park Neighborhood Pool, this is an additional $1,004 to complete the funding for this.
I think it bears repeating, you recall, the, the funding for this is a commitment of three years running of CDBG funds of $1.2 million a year, starting in, starting in this current year. So this current year's allocation is already there, then there's two more years CDBG allocation, if I recall.
Plus $1.4 million from the state grant that we have.
Okay.
Okay, let's see, those are just a continuation of the, of the new programs that are starting up for the 10-year. Here's our last set of projects, or second to last set of projects. Doran Street Park is zero, no funding, tax-defuncted properties.
Let me note, that's because, as we noted in the last session, the Doran Street Park can be incorporated as part of the Doran Street Housing Project and funded through housing funds. So the open space will still be done, it'll just be funded through housing.
Tax-defuncted property purchase, this is a brand-new program that we're starting up, 100 grand each year as the opportunities arise. Here is the funding source for the, for the purchase of tax-defuncted properties. Open space is zero all the way across the board. Freeway Park Site A is 5 and 1/2 million in total, and you can see the funding that starts in fiscal year 11 to start the process, and then construction in, in 2012. And then this would be, and then Freeway Park Site C is zero, Community Aquatics Center is also zero, and then Columbus Soccer Field at 3 and 1/2 million, funded in '09 and in fiscal year 2010. New programs begin. Next is soccer fields is not funded. We were with Freeway Park Site A and with Columbus Field. The thought was that we had, we would have enough soccer fields at that point. ARC tennis courts.
Well, let me put it a different way. Within 10 years, you will build, develop three new soccer fields. Whether that's enough or not remains to be seen, but in 10 years, you'd achieve three new soccer fields.
ARC tennis courts at $225,000.
And here, we, the council, looked at concepts involving Fremont Park, and staff is going back to look at the ability to do more of a center court kind of development at Fremont Park. This took our total allocation up to about 900,000, George?
950.
950 for the ARC tennis court replacement Fremont Park project.
Dog Park is not specifically funded. Where we had the discussion was that we were going to put that, the Dog Park will be funded out of the new park development account, which is the next project.
Yeah, we should note, you didn't have that discussion. The, the management team that worked on balancing, balancing this had the discussion. The, the Dog Park was in there for 400 to 500,000 dollars. Our conclusion was that with the amount of money allocated for parks, because every identified park is still funded here, plus the 1.2 million for parks, which is in addition to the existing CIP funding, which is, how much, Ron? Help me here.
It's on page, slide 50, I think.
Yeah, park upgrades and maintenance is half million in the early years, a million in the, in the later years. Takes us an additional 1.2 million, so we're 2 to 2 and 1/2 million dollars a year. I think the total was roughly.
We're 22 and 1/2 million.
22 and 1/2 million dollars in new park development over the 10-year period, and again, that's parks that have yet to be identified. So our conclusion was, we should be able to figure out some way to fit the new Dog Park, if that's your desire, within that, within that funding scenario.
Supplemental park upgrades, again, just adding more money, quarter of a million dollars over the 10 years, so that generates, that allocates 2 and 1/2 million. Mount Noakes Property is shown at zero. Bonanno Property is also shown at zero over the 10 years.
Before we, before we get on to the recreational component, why don't we, why don't I ask for some support from my colleagues to put some money into the Community Aquatics Center? The, the indication is that there's possibly 14 to 20 million of tax increment, which is not allocated, and if we put some money into that, at least hold its place as a stakeholder until such time as we can flush out. With that big goose egg next to it, it looks kind of lonely out there. Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Mayor, can you, can you, I think I got it straight by now, but just for clarification, we talk about the Community Aquatics Center, that is different from the Community Pool at Edison, correct?
Correct.
That's, that's the, the other, the other pool venture.
Right.
Yeah.
It's in a, I, I look at it as an aquatic center.
Right.
Which is different than a neighborhood pool. Pacific Edison is a neighborhood pool for all intents and purposes. An aquatic center could be anywhere from what you see in Pasadena, Santa Clarita, to, to industry. Could be somewhere between probably 20 million and 50 million dollars, depending on land costs.
I would certainly support that, with, with the caveat that, again, I know this may not be the precise moment for it, but my preference that when that comes to fruition, that is located in a part of the city that will be more centrally located than, say,
Mount Noakes.
Part of the city, or Mount Noakes, or, you know, somewhere up in the, in the woodlands or something like that. I think it should be more centrally located. But yes, absolutely.
To at least hold those plans. Right, I'd also be happy to do that. And in fact, you're referring.
And in fact, you're referring to the redevelopment funds.
Right.
The TIF and so forth that could be used.
That's the money that we haven't.
That would kind of geographically tie in.
Mr. Starbird was hoping to have a little cushion, and we're quickly using his cushion.
Well, but that would geographically also tie it to the central areas.
Mr. Starb. And that's an important point. Something that we haven't done with this plan is to look at how we utilize any of the resources from the redevelopment agency, with the exception of the park impact fees. Any of the tax increment that's committed to parks, libraries, we have to make sure that there is a, that they will benefit, whatever's done with that will benefit the redevelopment project area. And as we noted, anything really close, that's kind of a slam dunk. The further away you get, the more difficult it is to make the determination it'll benefit the redevelopment project area. So the potential for the bond money, the tax increment money, we'll have to keep our eye on where the projects are, how the money's used, and always come back to this need to determine it'll have a benefit to a project area. We haven't really done a lot of that. We've assumed that, for example, you could possibly take a project that is partially funded in general fund, like the Central Park, and to the extent that that isn't currently using TI, you could displace general fund money in that project, utilize TI and free up the general fund money to use in a project that otherwise might be justified, might not be able to justify TI. We'll need to do that kind of balancing as we proceed down the road to utilize the tax increment. But certainly, an aquatic center located in the central part of the city, I would imagine relatively close to CBD, would be something you can probably justify just based on its geographic location. But if it were up in the far northern part of the city, you might have a very hard time justifying the use of tax increment for that project.
You want to.
Okay, so the desire is to reflect an estimate on tax increment and then show those funds committed to an aquatic center?
Right.
And what, and this comes back to your question earlier, Mr. Mayor, about the number that was up there for a aquatic center. At that point, obviously, we weren't really paying that much attention to those numbers because they were just sort of the high-end numbers for, but what kind of numbers are we, I understand that the consultants were going to come back.
George, maybe.
Let me suggest another way of looking at this plan. We'll estimate the tax increment revenues, and that, for the moment, will be what will be allocated toward a community facility. We know a facility is at least 20 million dollars or more, depending on the cost of land. Without knowing exactly what the number is, if you plug in 50 million, we have a huge gap we have to try and figure out a revenue source for. We could identify something like state or federal grants, but it might be easier to recognize that we could plug in the project to be what we think the revenues that we can estimate accurately now are, recognizing that's still not going to be enough to likely do an entire project. But in the first year or two, after we get some allocation, we could begin a concept design process, which I think you'll need to go out and chase any federal and state grants. We'll need to have to have a picture of what we think this is going to be and what the cost is going to be, and how much we think we'll raise locally in order to leverage it against state or federal grants.
Absolutely. And I think the high end also was looking at purchase, acquisition costs as well. That was what took it to the 50 million range. I think we're looking at 20, 22 million for a comparable aquatics facility like Santa Clarita.
Although, again, if we're going to keep it somewhere around the central business district in the central part of the city, you're probably going to have some land acquisition costs. And we know those could be a fairly significant component. So you could be looking at a 20 million dollar development component, and who knows? You figure a couple of acres in the downtown, you could be talking 10, 12 million dollars for land for that kind of facility. So there, you're up in the 30 million dollar range.
You can tie in with GWP and the gray water usage too, maybe. Right, Mr. Drayman? We'll be using that pool.
That's what the filter system forum says. We'll put in a really big filter system.
Okay, let's move on, and I'd love to finish this today, so.
Sure. New Northwest Branch Library, again, off the table. Full Branch Library has some planning money in 2014 of 300,000, and that has no location at this point. Central Library Equipment Relocation, 850,000, funded in '10, 2010. Reorientate the Central Library entrances of 250,000 for each entrance for 500,000 total. Central Park Phase Two is not funded, that's zero. Brand Library and Art Center is a new program that we wanted to start up. Council's already funded through Phase Two, but this sets aside money to do additional work at Brand Library and Art Center, starting off at 500,000 a year, and then it trends down to 250 for a total of 2,750,000 over the next 10 years. Old Police Building reuse of 2.5 million, again, we're getting, we think we can use approximately a million and a half from electric public benefit funds. And then here's our last grouping. City Hall renovation is not funded. Citywide Document Management System receives 100 grand. Citywide Wi-Fi system is not funded. Increase the transfer to wireless. This, again, we needed to create some room in different years to, in order to balance out every year, to have a positive surplus. So it's zero in '09, but talking with information technology, they were fine with this cash flow projection, that they would have the cash needed to replace their radios and so forth. So you see the funding is just a hair over 11 million dollars over the three years for the transfer to the wireless. And then remodel the permit center at half a million dollars in 2009. Total funding, total additional funding for these projects, grand total is 99,438,000. If I can, I would like to go over just a few major projects. Mr. Starbird has already mentioned a few of these.
It's actually more, right? Because we've made a couple modifications.
Right, it's now going to be, right. We will make those adjustments.
The total, the aquatic center is balancing, it's whatever we.
Right.
And that will make the fire station. She made a fire. Why, Murray?
Pardon me, and then we'll need to have the conversation later today about Rockhaven and how that figures in.
Wanted to give the council a sense of how much we're actually setting aside in total over these 10 years, considering that you've already adopted a CIP budget in late June, and then considering this recommended funding of these projects. For new park development, you have 12 million dollars over the 10 years. Add that to park upgrades project of 10 and a half million, so you have a total for new parks and park upgrades of 22 and a half million dollars over the 10 years. I don't think we've ever come anywhere near this dollar amount in the past for parks and parks funding.
And Ron, that doesn't include the identified individual projects.
Correct.
So add on top, this is just money that hasn't been identified yet, with the exception of maybe the Dog Park, that hasn't been identified for specific projects. So on top of this, you put the money committed to any of the identified projects, be it Rockhaven, the soccer fields, of which we have roughly 9 million dollars over 10 years, and the number committed to parks, recreation facilities, is really quite large. I think Ron's right, probably nothing like it in the city's history.
88 upgrades, again, a brand-new project that we started, and you can see here, over the 10 years, a commitment of 6.4 million. And just to reiterate what Mr. Starbird said, this is over and above what we will do on all the new public works and parks projects as they go through. They will be doing their own ADA upgrades in those projects, so this is over and above that. Street funding, you can see 36 million just coming from our capital improvement fund, and then 50.8 million out of the gas tax fund. So that's 50 plus 36, 86 million dollars in streets over 10 years. And then the last one that I wanted to highlight was our commitment to wireless system from just the general fund, if you will, component of it, of 18 and a half million. And that is it.
Okay, let me hear, thank you, Ron, thank you, Jim. Let's hear from Bill Weisman. All right, how much time do you need, Bill?
Just a few minutes, less than five.
Okay, let's, I'll give you three and we'll see how that works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning. Good morning, council members, city staff. As the public, I'm feeling a little outnumbered today sometimes when we're here Tuesday nights, there's more of us than there are of you, but I think we've got that reversed. My name's Bill Weisman, I'm resident of Far North Glendale. I'm here today also representing a lot of folks that had to work and were able to come to a daytime hearing. I'm actually in favor of many of the unfunded requests that are on the list. It would be great if we could maybe do all of those. Obviously, that's not going to be possible, so you gentlemen have the tough job of trying to winnow things down. But I'm here primarily to talk about Rockhaven, and it kind of was brought home to me Saturday night, we had the Montrose Christmas Parade, and it was a lot of fun, although it was extremely cold. And we're members of the Historical Society, so we marched in the parade, and we lined up before the parade started next to Rockhaven. And even in the dark, you can see what a gorgeous property it is, the large mature trees that are on there. Because of the fact that we do participate with the Historical Society, we're aware of some of the interesting history of Rockhaven, the Hollywood stars that have done rehab there. And it's also the last remaining example of the sanitariums that used to be a main feature of life in the Crescent Valley back when it was still known for its pristine air quality. I think what we're presented with here is really maybe a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city to purchase this property. I don't know if we're going to get any other bites at this particular apple. Because of some issues we're seeing right now with the subprime lending crisis, which is putting downward pressure on residential real estate values, the time may be right for the city to acquire Rockhaven. I think also because of the proximity to the Montrose Library and Fire Station 29, and there's already been some discussion of this today, we can have some flexibility if the Rockhaven property is acquired in terms of both the fire station expansion and possible library relocation, in addition to the old Ford property across the street. I think it gives us a lot of different options to consider. For those reasons, I'd like you to urge you to make the Rockhaven purchase a high priority as part of a strategy that also supports the Montrose Library and Fire Station 29, and certainly willing to support, like I said, other things on the list of unfunded requests, especially the Community Aquatics Center, which I think is another real need for this community. And I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for waiting so long. Sandra Enzlo.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. If it's still morning time, I'm not certain. Mr. Quintero, Mr. Drayman, Mr. Starbird, Mr. Howard, and staff, thank you so much. This will be short. My name is Sandy Enzlo, and I live at 2812 Manhattan Avenue in Glendale. I am a citizen here, this is my city, and sitting here this morning, I am deeply impressed by everything that all of you have to go through to manage the city. I'm here primarily for, at this point, Rockhaven, but I want to talk about it in a bigger context, whether east or west, north or south, our city is growing leaps and bounds, and we would like, I would like to see you take advantage of Rockhaven and not only expand the fire station, but rebuild the library. Measure twice, cut once, and really take advantage of this piece of property. This should stay within the city as a historical site and still be functional for us. And as a Montrose Library built on that site, that would be a very awesome thing. Something I didn't mention on my card is that I think that an aquatic center would also be a really important thing for us to have in this city. There is not enough for our young people and for a lot of people, and an aquatic center would be an important thing as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you also for waiting. I have no other speaker cards, and, Mr. Starbird, is there anything that we haven't told you in the last six months that you'd like to hear?
Not that I'd like to hear.
Will you be?
I would anticipate our next step will be to put this, no, I don't anticipate next Tuesday, but maybe for the 18th, to prepare a plan for actual approval that we can then incorporate into the CIP. Not that we'd have an update on a document, but we'd have these numbers updated and something, I think, that you could then approve for us to then incorporate eventually in a printed CIP document.
And I would love to have.
I'd like to wrap this up before the end of the calendar year. Your last meeting is on the 18th.
I would love a full complement of council members.
So would we.
Let's make sure they get voters early enough.
We'll leave it up to the mayor.
And it's incumbent that they attend this. These are huge decisions affecting the future of Glendale and our expenditures and our budgets.
We might want to place the next discussion, which would be just taking what you've given us today, putting it in a CIP format that could be approved, and put it on one of your six o'clock meeting agendas, say for the 18th.
Very good idea.
I'm not sure we'll need to take two hours to talk about in a study session format.
I think that's a good idea. It'll be a busy evening.
What do you think about that, Mr. Howard?
Well, it's really up to the council. We can go till as long as you want. We have indigenous tree, indigenous tree ordinance and a whole host of other things packing in. I don't have the agenda forecast in front of me, but it's fairly crowded.
18th is your last meeting of the year.
Last meeting of the year.
Or we do it at 2:30. Again, I'm less optimistic about getting a full city council if we do a morning meeting. We could put it on the afternoon. We could bring it in at 2:30.
Yeah, 2:30.
Why don't we do it as a special meeting at 2:30?
And I think every single one of these issues would invite comment from the public.
Right. So why don't we bring it in at 2:30? We will not have a 52-page PowerPoint presentation. We'll put the complete document together so you can see sort of what Ron has done here in the last part of his PowerPoint with the adjustments you've given us today, and we'll make sure it balances, and we'll bring that back to you on the 18th at 2:30.
Mr. Drayman.
Having gone through this process now for the first time, I have one last question related to, Mr. Starbird, what part of the budget does the paper for PowerPoints in this city, what?
That's a very large budget.
Because I would like to slash that, Mr. Mayor, as much as possible.
Integrated waste, I think, is probably where you could.
I just might note, we, I hope you find the PowerPoint presentations useful to watch. We're more than happy to not make copies, and frankly, we've been chided and directed over the years to give you color copies of any PowerPoint presentation. If you're happy with black and white, that saves a lot of cost and a lot of time, believe me. Or if you don't need copies of what we present, we're happy to do that, but it's nice to be able to follow what we're presenting, and we try and get those out to you a little bit in advance, so you can have a little bit of a head start on numbers like this. But it's entirely up to you. The PowerPoints for something like this, I think, are pretty important. I don't know how we'd walk through these numbers without them. But if you're willing to live without color, that is a big help.
I'm willing to live without.
I certainly am. Most of my life is lived without any color at all, since coming down here, Mr. Starbird, so.
It would save a lot of energy and time if we could present you with black and white.
Yes, colorful language not included, yes.
Copies.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you again for your time.
So moved.
And seconded.